Good evening, everyone. We will now welcome you guys to the tonight's city council meeting and we'll ask Ms. Lewis for the invocation.
Father in heaven, we first of all give you praise, honor, and glory because of who you are, the Almighty. We ask that you would bless us this evening and, Father, give us wisdom and knowledge as to governing over the business of the city. Cover our minds and our hearts and help us to just do the will that you would have us do, Father. And we give you praise, honor, and glory in our son's holy name. Amen.
Thank you. I'll now call the meeting to order at 6:01 and we'll ask Acting Police Chief Reyna to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll turn to Ms. Lucy for a roll call. Here?
Look over here.
President.
Lewis here. You're on this.
We have a quorum. We'll now move to item four, consideration approval of agenda. We'll have a motion. Councilmember Jones, so moved. Ms. Lewis?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration agenda approved. We'll now move to presentations. Tonight, and I'll step down here. Okay, this is going to be a certificate of recognition and it's going to be presented to Sarah Belevins. Do we have someone up here that would like to stand up here while I read this?
Yes.
Sarah Belevins, Assistant City Clerk, HR Analysis/Administration. In recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Banos and for being named Employee of the Month for January 2023. And we sure do appreciate all the work that she does. And would you like to say something?
My name is Leila and I am Sarah's daughter. My mom would like to thank her supervisor, Lucy, for all of her support in my mom's professional development as it has molded her into the hard worker she is today. My mom would also like to thank those who selected her as Employee of the Month and looks forward to working with you all for many years to come.
Let's get a picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of the public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber information table. At this time, I would like to invite the public to come forward and speak. And remind those in the council chambers to either turn their cell phones off or silent.
My name is Claudia. I live in the mobile home park over there by where you guys have put the homeless. I come because one of the ladies who lives right next to where the homeless are at passed away and I, in my heart and my head, believe that she died from too much stress. They were all, they tried to break into her son's car. They stole my car. They stole another man's truck. I can't say straight out it was them, but I have lived there for 25 years. I have never had anything stolen. None of my neighbors have had anything stolen. Now, all of a sudden, because the homeless are there that you guys put there, all kinds of stuff is being stolen. You know, it's not fair. And I come here today to challenge you guys. You guys, the city is wasting so much money on those damn homeless. They don't care about breaking the laws. They don't care you're not supposed to have open fires with wood. They have them every night. Nothing is done. Last, on Monday, there was like two or three fire trucks out there because they had a fire going that was humongous and it was, it looked like it was going to burn down the tent where the man lives in the middle. You know, it's not fair for us to have to be going through all of this stress. And I challenge you guys, why don't you come into the mobile home park? We are law-abiding citizens. We live on social security. It's hard, like myself. I'm not going to talk for other people, but I know people have things that are broken in their mobile homes. We can't afford to fix them. Why don't you come in there and offer us help? You buy, you give them tents, you give them water, you give them this, you give them this, you give them this. Come and ask us. We might be able to need help. I've had two back surgeries. My toilet, I know this is stupid, but my bathroom, I have to bend over every time I have to flush it because I can't afford $5,000 to pay a plumber to come and fix my bathroom. I'm asking you guys, I'm begging you guys, please come and help us. We pay our taxes every year. All they're doing is putting out their hand and you guys run and help them. It's not fair. If you guys would hear what I'm saying, not just, I mean, listen to what I'm saying, not just hear me talking, but please help us. There's a lot of seniors in that mobile home park that need help, but nobody comes and offers us help. I worked, I was a single parent my whole adult life and whatever I have, I have because I've worked. These people don't want to work. They expect they put their hand out, you guys go and give them everything they need or want, even money for their damn drugs. And I've heard them asking each other for money for drugs. And I've reported it to you guys many times I've come up here. And like I told you before, yeah, I know I have a big mouth, but this big mouth is not going to shut up until something is done. Please help us.
Thank you. Anyone else in the?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Protem and council. My name is Gilbert Felix. I'm the district director for Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria, who was elected in November, was sworn into office in December, and now represents the beautiful city of Los Banos in the state assembly. So I wanted to introduce myself and just give you a quick update from the assemblywoman. So again, she is the new representative for Los Banos and much of Merced County, including the city of Merced, Livingston, Atwater, and we also represent portions of Madera County and Fresno County. Through redistricting, you all have been put into very different legislative districts, but you know, I just wanted to introduce myself, let you know we're here to work with you, to serve you. And the assemblywoman really hit the ground running the past couple of weeks with some very unprecedented issues that the district has faced, the hospital closure in Madera County, which we continue to work on with our federal and other state counterparts, as well as the significant flooding in eastern Merced County, particularly Planada and the community of McSwain. And you know, we stand ready to serve all of Merced County during these times of crises, but also in better times as well, looking to the future. So really want to put ourselves out there as a resource for you all. We know there are significant needs and projects that I think all working together, we can try and accomplish. Had a really, just quick and really good meeting today with your Chamber of Commerce. I was, I spent most of the day today with the exchange contractors, looking at different water infrastructure here on the west side of, of not just Merced County, but the entire Central Valley. Those are issues that the assemblywoman stands ready to work on. Some other quick updates from her. We're really proud to share that she's been named Chair of the Military and Veterans Committee for the state assembly, which we're really proud of because we have such a significant veterans community, not just here in Merced, not just in Los Banos and Merced County, but really throughout the Central Valley. So we're excited for that charge. She's also been put on the Committee for Agriculture, as well as Banking and Insurance. So four kind of strong committees that we're ready to roll up our sleeves and get to work. And like I just said earlier before, use this as a resource. We're here to serve you. Met with MCAG and we know that there's some infrastructure projects that Los Banos has been working on and we want to continue to work on with all of you. I'm more than happy to leave my business card, if I may, with the city clerk and would love to be in touch with you, city manager. And of course, you know, over the next couple of weeks and months and hopefully many years, we'll all get to know each other better and work together. And I do know that the assemblywoman in the coming days is going to be reaching out because she would love to meet with, you know, city leadership as well as you, city manager, and really identify the needs of the community and how can we draw down more state funding because we deserve a fair share. So thank you all so much again. Gilbert Felix with Assemblymember Soria, and I'll leave my business card. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tough to follow, Gilbert, but my name is Nicholas Gomes. I am the field representative for Congressman John Duarte of the 13th District, as many of you may well know. The 13th District with the redistricting includes northern, western San Joaquin County, western San Slas County, all of Merced County, Madera and Chachilla in Madera County, and the western part of Fresno County. So it's a huge, all the way down the county line. It's a huge district. My responsibilities will be continuing to help and serve the communities in Merced County. Part of my backstory is I worked for the last three and a half years with Congressman Jim Costa, doing the same role. So I look forward to continuing to be able to be a voice here for Merced County in Congress and helping the congressman represent his constituents. It is something that we've, we've spoken before with some of the council members and it's, it's something I look forward to, to be able to continue a great relationship with the city of Los Banos, to be able to help and, and again, illustrate what the needs are for the community and to the congressman. Now, something I do want to bring up, because Merced County was designated as a disaster area because of the flooding, if anyone listening at home or anyone here knows anyone who took damage because of the flooding, I urge you, please, to go talk to the FEMA representatives at the Merced County Fairgrounds in Merced. They are still signing people up for disaster aid. So if there is anything that is going through, even if your insurance is going to cover it or anything like that, please go out to the fairgrounds, please get registered. This is your opportunity because once FEMA is done taking applications, it's done. So we need to make sure as many people get out there as possible who were affected by the flooding, who are affected by this disaster, so that we can get them taken care of. Again, we're brand new. I don't have new business cards yet, but it is something that will be obviously in discussions and I will be around as the representative for Merced County to have meetings and to make sure that we're getting taken care of. So I will leave my information with clerk and we'll make sure that we stay in touch and this will not be the last you see of me, I guarantee it. So thank you very much and I look forward to being out here in Los Banos many, many, many times in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mayor Protem. I'm representing the Elks Lodge. I am the, one of the grant writers. And just a final report about our grant. Any kind of questions would go to DJ Barcellus. She's the person that does the communication. We have spent all the money that we have from our three grants that we received. We have not trespassed on the encampment, but we have provided to everybody that was homeless throughout the city. That is warm coats, gloves, thermal, hand warmers, boots, shoes, tennies, anything to keep people warm. We have also extended the giveaway to another group that helps children, that helps feed children. We gave them all the cup of noodles and everything. We also assisted with some agencies with warm clothing. We have worked with giving senior citizens that are cutting down on their PG&E because of the food costs and everything else, we have given them warmth, clothing and items. All of these were brand new. We just felt that we just needed to extend the warmth to individuals that most needed. We'll continue our work. There is one project that is coming up that we'll be part of, but I just wanted to give you guys a final report that we have been doing this now for about three weeks and just to be good citizens and to provide warmth for citizens that really need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one, one quick thing. When we did go out, we did find individuals that have just been evicted, nothing that they had done ill. We did also find some children with families out there. We did find a veteran out there. I'm not going to choke up, but we did contact the agencies so those agencies can reach out and help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Council, Mayor Protem. I'm here on behalf of the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce tonight. I'd like to take a couple trips up here as an, as a citizen too, but I'm going to just stick with the Chamber of Commerce right now. As far as things that are going on with the chamber, one of the things I did, I had to go over toward Gilroy to take care of some, a personal matter. And while I was there, I did a, I did a route over to my favorite restaurant in Hollister, which is next door to the Chamber of Commerce there. Hollister doesn't have a Chamber of Commerce per se. They do support one financially and a lot of different ways as well. And one of the nice things that they have going there is they've also got what I would call more like a tourism and sort of armed there. So they're, they've got like a 501(c)(3) that takes care of like the tourism type of things. And then they also have, and then they're also organized under a 501(c)(6). And that's more like their chamber side of their operation. So I think that I got a lot of great insight. That's pretty much how I ran my career always was to go benchmark folks and I got in there, learned a wealth of things. She spoke with me for probably about, I'd say about three hours. And this was all yesterday, so it's all very new. But upcoming events here in Los Banos, one that's the chamber is putting on is the Spring Street Fair Saturday. It's April 15th, obviously this year, eight to three. And we want to thank our event sponsor, which is Sutter Health Memorial Hospital. So that was very nice of them to step up and help sponsor that. We did put on two new members. The first one is the Alzheimer's Association. And then the second one is Titan Towing and Road Assistance. These members have been added to our chamber member listing and that listing is now on the chamber website. Let's talk about an upcoming workshop. The chamber is working with Merced County Workforce Investment and Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to find new workshops, grant opportunities, business help to the Los Banos business community. The chamber will be hosting application workshop in the chamber office downtown to help businesses, owners apply for grants that were affected by COVID-19. I believe those are probably more like micro businesses that would fall under that category. As far as ribbon cuttings, ribbon cuttings, we had, we actually had a couple here recently. One that happened, actually happened on Martin Luther King Day, Monday, the January 16th. It was very well attended and it had a real exciting environment. Didn't get me so excited that I wanted to jump on a machine or anything, but I, but I, but the event went real well. The Los Banos High School marching band was there. We had, we had local council members, Lambert from District One, Begonia from District Two, and Ms. Lewis from District Four on hand giving support to this new business. So it was really good to see one of those big box stores get back up and going, maybe under a different ownership or whatever, but at least it's back up and going and making us look like we're totally, you know, back and running after all the COVID things that's gone on. Next one was Valley Spring Memorial Care was last week. It was on January 27th. I believe that might be in Council Person Jones's district. It's on Miller. Let's see. We did have representation. The two folks are here. One from Esmeralda Soria's representative was there.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, and then Congressman John Duarte's representative was also there. I wasn't really sure that a guy that used to represent a Democrat could actually be a representative Republican too, but he said he just likes to help people. So I'll go with that. As far as some other things, the Los Banos Chamber is always looking for new ways to find and to help the city, supporting local businesses. February 4th, there was a dinner dance for the Egg Boosters. Also, February 4th is a John Lennon concert that's sponsored by Los Banos Art Council. Rotary's, on the 23rd, Rotary's 10th Annual Empty Bowls Fundraiser is taking place. On February 25th, Los Banos Fire Department Pancake Breakfast is happening. So if anyone would like to get involved with the chamber, we welcome. We're on Sixth Street and we're also going to have a directory that goes out and I know a lot of the folks are, that, you know, visit from out of town, look at this directory. And so all of our, all our businesses are in this directory and it's, and we're working in concert with West Side Express to help this get distributed. And I thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Do I have anybody else in the public? If no one else in the public, we'll turn to the city clerk.
I have no comments.
And no comments? All right, so at this time, we'll close the public forum and we'll move on to item number seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And we'll turn to city clerk, Ms. Melanie.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 236808 through 237252 in the amount of $4,925,031.82. Second quarter investment report for the 2022-23 fiscal year. Minutes for the January 18th, 2023 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6606, denying application for leave to present late claim by attorney Mario Cesar Valdez. by attorney Mario Cesar Validera's Esquire on behalf of Elizabeth Ann Lopez. City Council Resolution Number 6607, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6608, appointing Gerald Giesel to the Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee. City Council Resolution Number 6609, amending Division Four Salary Schedule, employee classifications relating to changes to Section A Administration and Section C Community and Economic Development. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Yeah, I'll check with council to see if any item needs to be pulled for discussion for separate vote. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. I'd like to pull item G.
Okay, would you like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and?
Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted minus item G.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, we'll go to item G, and that will be interim finance director. Was there a specific question on that? Ms. Lewis, would you like your question from item T?
Thank you. Yes, and just reviewing Exhibit A, the schedule, salary schedule. It appears from what I understand, we have two employees that are involved in this classification. And it gives, it gives the range for the new salary. The difference for the Human Resource Director from, and I'm only assuming that all these employees are at step five. I don't know if they're all at step five right now, but at the step five level, there's a difference of $596 from the old salary to the new. And for the Economic, Community Economic Development Director, from, there's a difference of $4,083, which is a large disparity to me. I know that the Community Economic Development Director has a lot of projects that are overseeing. I think there are two employees, three employees in that department. In regards to the Human Resource Director, there's at least maybe two, maybe three employees within the city that work directly under her. But that person is also responsible for all the employees in the city. So I, I'm, I'm very concerned about the disparity in this salary reevaluation. And so I, I, I can't, I can't vote for this. I, I don't know if we can hire someone from the outside of the city to look at this and give us another look at what these salaries should be based on what's in our area and adjacent areas. But $596 to $4,800, $4,083, that, that's a large disparity.
So my recollection was that you gave Brent Kuhn the charge to do that comparison. He did that and presented that to you. It was a market comparison of other jurisdictions that were compared with as to those two classifications. And it was his recommendation, which is in this new salary range, was driven by his report to you in closed session concerning what he saw in terms of the market regarding those two types of classifications, Human Resource Director and Community and Economic Development Director. Obviously, it's his report. He did an exhaustive report. And if you're not comfortable going forward tonight, I would suggest that we put it on for the next agenda where he will be here to explain those numbers to you once again. But those were gone through, I think, at length and in detail at the, at your closed session when this was discussed. And that he reported to you, and I don't have the report in front of me. It wasn't my report. But he reported to you his rationale for those two different salary ranges. Because they're two very different jobs. And he, his findings were there was, these new salary ranges would be in conformance with the ranges that he was seeing outside of the City of Los Banos. Part of this was done in order to be competitive with outside jurisdictions. And I think that was the, the driving force for his study and his report to you.
Now, in your notes that you have, did he give us the salary range differences at that time? I don't recall.
Yes, he, he specifically presented what you're looking at on that exhibit at the closed session.
I, I still think it's, it's, it's a large disparity. And I'm not saying that any one particular employee deserves over another. Because these two employees have waited for a long time in our city.
It's really not, it's really not employee driven. It's driven by the, the job, the job classification.
Employees are in the job classification. And all I'm saying is that they have been without, they have been without a justified raise based on what they do. And they were underpaid for a very long time. But, you know, looking at this, I, I still see a large disparity.
Okay, so again, the, it's my understanding that the ranges are developed in order to compete with like type jobs in other jurisdictions within our area so that the city can compete in bringing those people and filling those positions. And it's really not person driven, it's job driven. I think if you have a concern about it, it'd be more appropriate to express those to Mr. Kuhn and let him explain that to you. So I would suggest for this item, if you're not comfortable going forward tonight, that it be continued to the next meeting on the 15th.
Is there a reason, being that this was on the agenda tonight, that he's not present?
I don't know. I don't know that answer to that question.
So we had, just to answer the question regarding why Mr. Kuhn is not here. He was confident that he had gone through this item in closed session and that had been given direction from the council and that this was a consent item that had already been talked about and explained. And he will be here this week. It's, his schedule was arranged for later in the week to be here in person. But this was his only item on the agenda. And being that this had already been discussed, his arrangements to come later in the week was made to be able to accommodate that.
Well, I won't go into details about what was done in closed session. However, the council is on the agenda tonight. And however, the council votes is fine, but I have to express my concern about the disparity. And, you know, you're looking at it as a job classification, that's fine. I also have to look at it based on the fact that we have two women that were underpaid in our city based on their job classification. And this is supposed to be something that is bringing them into line. But it, it's a large disparity. So I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Meeting, and all five of us were on the same page about this at that time. I hate to rehash this out, whether it's a male in the position or female in the position. It's just about job title. And I don't want to push us off to do it again for it to come up with the same conclusion. So I make motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6609 as submitted.
I would just indicate to you that because there's only three of you here tonight, it will take three votes to pass this. Three, three yes votes. That's why I was suggesting when the full council is here that you again discuss it, debate it. You'll have Mr. Kuhn here to explain it, and you can move forward at that point.
Okay, well, I don't want to kill this thing off for a future opportunity, so push it back.
Okay, for item G, we'll continue to our next meeting for Mr. Kuhn to give us a little more insight on it.
So pretty much everything on the agenda, it has to be three votes or?
Anything that, anything that deals with finances has to have a minimum of three votes, three aye votes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
All right, we'll now move on. Yes, he's withdrawn. It'll be continued to the next council meeting, the 15th. All right, we'll now move on to item eight, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein, court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein. Our in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And our first item is item A, public hearing, to receive public comment on revisions to the City of Los Banos 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Continuity Plan, update and consider a resolution accepting the 2020 UWMP and WSCP. And we'll turn to Public Works Director, Mr. Thanh.
Mr., Mr. Mayor Protem, just as a point of clarification, we did vote on the other two items on the consent agenda? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, Mr. Thanh?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present these items. So joining me tonight, I have Mr. Owen Acubid. He is the Principal Engineer for Water Resources with Provost and Pritchards. This item has been presented to you guys before. It was adopted actually back in 2021, the specific plan that, that the current one that is in play. So let me go back and just talk about the purpose of this document. So again, this is called the Urban Water Management Plan. It is a document that required by the state for all water suppliers that supply more than 3,000 acre feet of water to have this document in place. And the purpose of the document was really to support long-term resource planning and ensure adequate water supply for the city. Again, the current documents that is currently in force was adopted back in June 16, 2021, and was submitted to the state for approval. In July 2022, the Department of Water Resources provide us a notice of advisories and provided some comments in regards to our urban water management plan. Specifically, this comment is in regards to our target goal or what we call a per capita water use. That is the gallons of waters that is being used per person per day for the city. Our goal in the urban water management plan that was adopted was 165 gallon per, 165 gallon per person per day. However, upon review, the Department of Water Resources determined that our 2020 data shows that we are over those target goal at 173 gallon per person per day. And that based on an estimated population of 42,869. Again, a little asterisk here. That population was based on and estimated by the Department of Finance that was available during the time that that plan was adopted in 2021. Now, one other thing to look into too is that in 2016 to 2019, the city has been meeting this goal. So with that, the Department of Water Resources required the city to re-review or reevaluate our urban water master plan or based on the most relevant data. Or the city may lose the ability to qualify for various grants if we continue to exceed over this per capita goal. Now, in 2022, in July, right after we have received a comment from the Department of Water Resources, we solicit the help of Provost and Pritchard, who was the consultant that helped us adopt the original document back in '21 to review all of the, the compliance and the comments that was provided by the Department of Water Resources. We look at five different alternatives. And while we were reviewing all of those alternatives, the 2020 census data became available. And it actually shows that in 2020, the city population actually increased by 5%. And I kind of put it in a proud point here. It actually went up from what was estimated at 42,000 to actually 45,000. So with this actual new data available, we recalculated our per capita demand, or our capital use, and it actually put us in a better position. We were actually at 163 gallon per person per day, which meet our target goal. So with this, the Department of Water Resources required us to amend our urban water management plan to include this new population data so that way we can reflect the actual amount of water use per gallon per capita. So this approach was commu, was communicated to DWR. And then the result was their request for us to revise, do a minor revisions to our urban water management plan to include this new data. The public notice for this new revised document was issued on January 4th. And for tonight, I have for you to review and actually open up public hearings so that way we can make a proposal to adopt this new urban water management plan. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thanh. I'll check with council, see if anyone has any questions. We'll open it to the public for? Public hearing? Anybody in the public? I see no one in the public. Ms. Melanie, anybody? Emailed? All right, we'll now close the public hearing. And we'll entertain a, a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6610. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protem, I'd like to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6610 as submitted.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Jones, a second from Councilmember Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Resolution passes. We'll now move to item number nine, advisement of public notices. And we have three, and we'll turn to interim city manager, Ms. Els.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and City Council. The first item is for a Type 47 alcohol license. This is for the Roundup Bar. They were recently approved for a 41 and are requesting an intensification to a Type 47. They're located at 830 East Street. The next is for a mobile food vendor. This would operate in the public right of way, doing business as Bentley and Papa Hot Dog. And this is for mobile food vendor number 2023-01. And then the last item is a site plan review. This is for a self-storage facility located in the industrial zoning area on the northeast corner of Johnson Road in Wilmot. It'll be about 56,000 square foot facility. And these public hearings will be held on Wednesday, February 8th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And we'll now turn to the city manager report.
All right, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I do have one item on January 26, 2023, based upon an annual performance review by myself, the interim city manager. The Public Works Director slash City Engineer's salary will be increased to $16,259 monthly. This is $195,108 annually. This will become effective February 16, 2023. I also want to give an update on the homeless encampment. The notices, a 30-day notice has been posted out at the encampment to notify those individuals there that there will be a closure and cleanup of the encampment. The closure will occur on February 20th. And the Public Works Department and Code Enforcement, just as of today, they have been providing cleanup of the location just to remove debris and start helping to facilitate that closure of the encampment. And then the last item, I do want to thank the tireless effort of our Public Works Director and City Engineer on the sewer break at the Canal Trail, working around the clock 24/7, arranging for crews to be there. And then the hands-on approach with all of the other departments just helping out where possible, police and fire helping out as needed. But Public Works really taking on. But Public Works really taking on that incident and just trying to mitigate as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible. And for the loss of sleep, Neuron, thank you for keeping things together and keeping our city running. We deeply appreciate it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. And now we'll go to item 11. I did speak with the mayor earlier. At this time, there is nothing to report. He will report on the next meeting on the 15th. And I'll turn to Ms. Lewis, anything to report on the air? I think it's the air quality? And nothing to report on the San Joaquin Valley? And now we'll turn to item 12, City Council Member Reports. And we'll start with Ms. Lewis.
Nothing to report this evening, thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I, too, would like to thank our city staff, especially our Public Works Department, for working so hard on the very complex sewer line replacement. I know that's kind of, that was a different animal than what you guys normally deal with. But you guys have been doing a fantastic job, and thank you on that. I'd like to also welcome Lucy Lawrence, our new city treasurer. I know she's going to make a great addition to our city. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up for the position. And then lastly, April 29th is the Downtown Association's Casino Night. It's going to be a great night. It's going to be out at the Lopes Barn. There'll be food, games, and live auction. Tickets can be purchased down at the Downtown Association office, which is located at 907 Sixth Street. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And myself, I do want to thank Mr. Neuron and City Manager, active Intern City Manager, Ms. Elms, for the updates and the great work that you, the long hours that you spent on it. And also welcome our new Finance Director and everyone else here. That concludes mine. And now we'll move on to adjournment. And I'll accept a motion for adjournment. Mr. Jones? So moved. Second? Ms. Lewis?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:48.